At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
All right, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome on a rainy evening. Call the meeting to order and show that all council members are in attendance. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Only to make a request that after the next study session, I would propose that we have a executive session with NODL development in order to discuss the market analysis and progress that they have had with leasing. And I'm requesting that because the proposed amendment to the urban renewal plan has a significant increase in both the TIF rebates as well as the city contributions. And I think having that sort of information from NODL would be quite informative and helpful.
Which is not an appropriate topic for executive session.
I would really have to search that. I'm not familiar with any provision that would allow that.
So we could schedule an open meeting, but we can't have an executive session?
Well, as I understood it, they were reluctant to talk about some of their leasing progress in public when I asked them about that before, so.
Still doesn't, still want to be inappropriate.
If they'd be willing to arrange two-on-two meetings, possibly, something of that nature, just so that we could have an exchange of information.
We can do that. We can make that happen.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on the consent agenda? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Tonight, we have two proclamations. The first being National Historic Preservation Month. City of Council Plus Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Plus, does hereby proclaim May 2016 as National Historic Preservation Month in the City of Council Plus Iowa, and urge all citizens of this historic city to join me in supporting the goals of Preservation Month and participating in this special observance with the seal of the City of Council Plus I so do proclaim. And I don't know if anyone's here from Historic Preservation tonight?
Yes.
Cal, do you want to say anything?
On behalf of the Historical Preservation Commission, I'm Cal Peterson, a member of that commission. I want to thank you for this and that part of our monthly, our annual Historical Preservation Month, we award somebody that has done a lot towards preserving history in Council Plus. And this year, that award is going to preserve CB for the work they've done on the Burgant House. So next Wednesday at four o'clock, we are going to present them with that award, and we invite all of you to be there with us at the Burgant House at 517 Fourth Street, four o'clock next Wednesday.
Lots of room in that house.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second proclamation is Kids to Parks Day. City of Council Plus Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas May 21st, 2016, is the sixth Kids to Park Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages family to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, melatoninous hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. And I'm sure I did not say that right, but high levels of cholesterol, I'm sure is what that is. And whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And finally, whereas Kids to Parks Days will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors, therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Plus, does hereby proclaim May 21st, 2016, as Kids to Park Day in the City of Council Plus, and encourage residents to take time on May 21st to take children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park with the seal of the City of Council Plus I do so by proclaim. Is anybody here from Kids to Park? I read where if you were born after 1984, you spent more of your youth indoors than you did outdoors. And as the proclamation says, there are detrimental effects to that lifestyle change. So encourage people to get active. All right, those are the proclamations, and we also have two public hearings tonight. This time, place for a public hearing is advertised in the matter of Resolution 16-109, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the Harmony Street Rehabilitation Project. Is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to talk to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. This time, place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-110, granting final plat approval for a two-lot residential subdivision to be known as Bethany Lutheran Home, lots one and two. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is Matt Hubel with the Schimmer Associates, 1044 North 115th Street in Omaha. I'm here representing the applicant to Bethany Lutheran Home. The reason for the plat is a result of a previous application for a planned residential development and a rezone. As a condition of approval of those applications, city staff asked that we basically split the lot instead of having a split zone. So that's what we've done here, is split the lot right where we showed our rezoning and where the planned residential development would go. So I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you have, or respond to any comments that the public might have.
Are there any questions?
I don't think so.
The only comment I would have is to pass along a comment that was given to me regarding the Lutheran church to your...
North.
North, and their access over the bridge. And they wondered if there was any possibility of working out access through your property. So I'll leave it at that.
I'll pass that along.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Anyone else? In that case, is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance on second consideration, ordinance 6276, admitting Title I administration and personnel by creating Chapter 1.22, elimination of residency requirement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Oh, please. I was going to echo what Nate said during the study session, if we could waive third.
I think it's important that we are able to, like the mayor has, was recently quoted in the paper, that we get the most qualified applicants we can. And 90% of the population in the metro area does not live in our community. And so we ought to avail ourselves of that talent. There are a lot of folks who live in our community, myself included, who make their living outside of our town. And a lot of people in our community do that as well. And so we have cross-border traffic. I think on the whole, our community benefits by that quite strongly. And so I look forward to seeing this happen, and I support the idea.
I would ask that if you do that, since the state law that allows this change is not effective until July 1, that we change the effective date on this ordinance to July 1 of this year.
So I would amend my motion to make it effective on July 1 of this year.
Second.
And can we do it, the second and third, all in one fell swoop, or should...
The third has to be...
Afterwards.
Yeah.
And I'd like to recognize Mary Ann Hanusa, who helped craft this law for Iowa so that we're able to do this. So thank you, Mary Ann. All right, we are voting on ordinance under second consideration first. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and then...
Motion to waive third?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution 16-111, authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of intent to enter into a development agreement by and between the City of Council Plus and 103 West Broadway LLC for the use of urban renewal assistance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I appreciate the proposed developer coming and speaking to us in our study session this afternoon. I'm convinced, based on the assurances, that they will look for the best deal for the project when bidding the project out, particularly because the taxpayer is involved in helping subsidize the project. And I think it's an important goal to have projects in our urban core work, as opposed to constantly building at the edges only. I think it's important to renew a community from within its existing infrastructure, where people have already paid for roads, for water, for sewer. And it helps recreate that walkable city that's so important to the future of our community. And with those assurances, and the assurances that they believe they'll be able to make the project work under the current various impressive list of funds that they're leveraging from different sources, I will support the project.
And the effective impact of the agreement that was referenced allows for the application for state grants that would facilitate this development. So that'll be an important part of the financing for this important project. And we wish them well in that application process.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 16-113, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Compass Utility LLC for the South First Street Neighborhood Rehab Project Phase 7.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 16-114, approving change order number eight, adding $52,458.08 to the contract amount for the Industrial Park Levy Improvements Project, Phase 2.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 16-115, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for engineering services in connection with the Levy Certification Project Drainage MR2.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution 16-116, authorizing and setting the 2016 annual assessments for Mosquito Creek Number 22, Seek Number 32, and West Lewis Number 35 for fiscal year 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 16-118, making changes to the positions assigned to the Public Health Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution 16-119, making changes to the positions assigned to the Parks and Recreation Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I just want to say I appreciate the mayor and his administration making the difficult choices on this resolution and the previous, the most previous one, just before this vote. It is cutting a couple of positions. It's to help stay within the budget. It's never, of course, a pleasant thing to lose positions, a person's position with the city. But at the same time, we're tasked with the job of looking out for the best interest and use of the taxpayer money. And I support these cost-saving moves, and commend the mayor for making the difficult choices.
Thank you. It is difficult, because these are good employees that have worked for the city for many years, so. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations 8A through C.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Citizens' requests to be heard?
None received.
Anyone wishing to address the council?
Chris Kelly, 864 M. Haines Avenue. A little bit different. The last four or five months, you've guys had to make some really hard decisions. Yes, I've been growly, grumbly, and growled at you and everything else. But I always, afterwards, that's the end of it. And I hope you guys understand that. I've got it. The mayor and I have had words. Nate, all of us have had words, most of us, about some of the projects. It's our money, and I hope that you, and I, it looks like you guys are doing a pretty good job of handling it. And I am still fond deal about the police department, and I'm glad that passed. I know we're worried about where to put it. And I want to make one thing clear, that the people don't understand. It isn't Heartland Property that owns that property. It's Heartland Family, the family group. And that money, they will use to put back into our community, like the mayor just said once before. And I'd like you guys to remember that. And still want the bike trail, you know where.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor Walsh, City Council, my name is Joel Driver, 10505 South Sur Street, Part 113. Hope everybody gets to go to Pride Week. It is very, it's a blast, and I think everybody should attend if they can.
Yep.
Thank you.
I was going to say something at the end of the meeting, but it starts next Friday night down at the Stir Concert Cove with the announcement of the city's new branding campaign, and then works its way through the following weekend, so.
And our peer connection might be in it this year.
Really?
Hopefully.
Super. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Becky? Yep, motion, do we need, can we get a motion received?
Motion to see if that... Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hurry before she ends it up.
No, you're fine.
Thank you.
There's a lot of procedure.
All right.
My name is Sarah Peterson, 2518 Avenue D, here in Council Plus. I've given you guys some packets. I want to apologize, I'm not a, I'm not a public speaker, so I'm completely nervous.
You're fine, take your time, relax.
I just want to, what I'm here for tonight is I have in my home is a family pet, is an emotional, emotional support animal for my son, a Juliana pig. He's a smaller breed than like a pot-belly pig. Nonetheless, that's what I'm here for. Some of the ordinances that we, that I've looked through, he's not, he's deemed a dangerous animal in our city. And I was trying to hope that maybe you guys would deem worthy, that maybe we could update things or revisit things. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I also want to ask that while we're working maybe to reach a resolution, that I can keep him in my home, as not to cause any further emotional stress to my son.
For sure.
Right, sorry. In the packets that I have there in front of you, is some of the information that I've gathered. Right there on the front is a letter from my son's doctor at Boys Town. On top of Dr. Sawyer, he sees another doctor that, monthly. And that was the letter from her. She... Underneath that is the, a letter from the breeder, from the veterinarian that I got him from in Kansas. What that says is because she knew that when I was looking for an animal that would bond specifically close with the family, since we had, have had so many, we had like six deaths in a two-year time, to include my son's father. Shortly, with all that happening, we were suggested to get an animal to bond so that he would have some additional support. And we had a dog that we had for quite a few years, and last year, there was a car accident, and she passed away. So when I was in the search for, his doctor suggested that we move forward, we're finding something else, another animal that specifically would bond, you know, closely. When I started looking for animals, I was looking for something specifically that bonded, and probably surprised, I was as surprised then as you guys may be to see that I'm here for a pig. This, the letter, second letter there was specifically, the breeder picked his specific pig because of its calm demeanor. And just the bond that they form. They form a bond with a particular family member. You know, they bond with the whole family, but they form a, you know, a strong bond with one. The second letter there, I was trying to reach out, and the third one was trying to reach out to some of the local places, just to prove or to have some kind of support that the mini pigs or the smaller breed pigs haven't, you know, proven to be like overrunning the ERs with bites and attacks on people. So Mr. Schmidt, the emergency services director at Ginnie, offered to let me quote him. The next one there is from Mark Langen. He's the vice president at the Nebraska Humane Society. We spoke for quite a while. He said that he would love to have come advocated for us, but due to his contract with Omaha, he didn't think that it would be okay for him to come across the river. And, you know, that just says that right now, he has 30 licensed pigs. The smaller breeds in Omaha has not had one complaint with sanitation, noise, pig bites, anything like that. The next one there, I actually called Glen Wood to see what their ordinances were, because there's, their ordinances aren't online. And the captain said, he said, "Well, if you're quoting," he said, "Why don't you take with you the quotes that I have here?" He said that never, in his 22 years of being the captain, he or any of his officers ever responded to a pig attack or pig bites. On Mark Langen's, he also said that it may be worth mentioning that Bellevue just recently has changed their ordinances to include mini pigs as domesticated pets, like the cat or the dog. The third, the next one that I have there is the letter that, how all this came about. I received a letter in the, in my door saying that I was harboring a pig. I called right away because I did not know I was doing wrong. So that was the, that's the letter that, that they had. Each of the two next letters are from my direct neighbors to my east and west, saying just extra support, that he hasn't been a nuisance, he's never been seen running outside the yard, he doesn't make, you know, excessive noise, there's no odor from our yard. In the pictures that I passed out there, in the, there's a few of them in the back that have, that show our backyard, that have a six-foot privacy fence that surrounds it. The next one there that has the pictures of the pigs on it, that it says medical records, those are the vaccines he was given from the veterinary clinic, and also the record that he was neutered. I had no intentions on breeding him. The next one that says the Julian Pig Association Registry, what that basically is, is like an AKC stamp for a dog, saying that they can be registered. And it has his lineage, which is also on the previous paper. To be able to be JPAR-registered, they have to prove lineage several, several back so that they can, you know, account for the size, the breed. I never did register. I have the information from the vet. I never did register him JPAR, because I had no intentions on breeding him. But I just had the paper so that you could see that he is actual a Juliana pig with his license number. The next one there is the agreement when I purchased him, to show that I've had him since August 12 of last year. So what I want to say, he, so I was, when I called, I had, there was several conversations with Mr. Barrett, and then I also spoke with Mr. Dirks. And I understand their point, where a law is a law. I did, when I, before I went to get this pig, I did call the Humane Society or the Midland Shelter, and I spoke with someone who, I asked if there was rules against having the small breed pigs in city limits, and I was told that there are no rules. I'm, I wasn't, that's why I'm not trying to hide anything. I'm not trying to be deceitful. I'm just trying, this is where we're at now. So with that, speaking to Mr. Dirks and Mr. Barrett, I'm, you know, I understand their position on it. I understand that, you know, they told, well, I was told that rules are rules, and I needed to just get rid of him. So I'm just moving past that. I'm here now. Like I said, we went to Kansas, we specifically picked out, the breeder had picked out that pig because of its demeanor. It was gentle. I don't even, some of the, some of the things that I wanted to point out specifically about, about the pigs, just differently than a dog, they're, they're very intelligent. Ours does puzzle boards, he'll move pieces around to find treats. You know, he's potty trained, he goes to the door, he barks, like, he barks when he has to go outside to use the restroom. He does have a litter box in the house, that if, you know, someone doesn't get to the door quick enough, he'll use the litter box. He's never been, he's never, ever been loose. I mean, he wears a harness. We even, I mean, I believed that we were being, doing the responsible thing. He has tags on with our phone number. We even, I mean, I've believed that we were being, doing the responsible thing. He has tags on with our phone number, our address, just in case. You know, I, I've learned how to trim his hooves. He does not have tusks, they were clipped off as a baby. You know, and he, the same way with a, with a dog, he would go to the vet, he gets, you know, physicals, things like that, gets updated vaccinations. I wanted to point out that our sister city of Omaha, just that they have, they do with their guidelines, they say that any, the mini pigs will not be greater than a hundred pounds. Our, ours is forty-five pounds, and I have been told by the vet that he's probably pretty much where he's going to be. I already told you that he's potty trained. Easier in a sense to clean up than a dog. He won't use the two same spots to urinate or to, to defecate. He, two same spots always, solid waste, it's easy to scoop up, don't have to hunt for anything. He does tricks, he knows how to sit, he lifts his hoof, he shakes, he spins, he gives kisses. He goes to the kennel to sleep at night, he knows when it's dinner time, he goes to the kennel, he doesn't beg for food. He's not outdoors at our house ever alone, because, well, on the other side of our fence, there's dogs that bark, and I'm always afraid that those dogs may get him. So he's never outside alone. We'll move past this. Yeah, do you guys have any questions for me? I'd be glad to answer anything that I know of.
So I'd like to look, you said Omaha and Bellevue obviously both allow this now under just a regular pet permit?
Yes. Both of the ordinance are in there for Bellevue and Omaha, and they're listed as domesticated and...
It's not a pot-bellied pig though, right? But it's like similar, smaller?
He's, he's smaller than a pot-bellied pig.
My recollection was when we did this, that there was, for whatever reason, there was a movie out or something, that people were very interested in pot-bellied pigs who grew up to be very large.
Right, right.
And so it was causing neighborhood problems.
And that's why I spent so, so much time finding a reputable breeder that had the lineage and had parents on site, so that I would have something to go off other than Craigslist, someone telling me I was buying a small pig, and then I end up with the farm hog. And the, like the pot-bellied pigs, the, like a healthy weight for a pot-bellied pig can be two hundred pounds. I'm not in the market for a two-hundred-pound pig at all. He's, I mean, you know, I was looking for something, like I said, smart, bond, clean. He's, you know, they don't shed, so, you know, that's a plus, hypoallergenic, so. Any, any other questions that I can answer? Any, I mean, I'm more than willing to find an answer, look for an answer, I just, I, my, my son Wyatt is here, which I questioned whether or not I should even bring him tonight, because I don't, he insisted on being here. You know, but I, I would like to, like I asked, if maybe we could revisit the wording, change some wording. I'm willing to fill out permits, inspections, pay fees, whatever it is.
My understanding of the current status is that the animal control has identified it as a non-eligible family pet, and so you have made arrangements you hope that you don't have to fulfill by taking the pig out of town to somewhere else. And that was, I think, maybe seven days from now it's supposed to be done. I've talked, the 12th. And so I've talked to the, so in three days, I've talked to animal, to Don Dirks really, and he said that he can extend that timeframe if, he said, "I'll do it a week." I said, "That really probably doesn't accomplish anything because the council would need to take some action," and he said he could accommodate that if, if there is a desire, so. Thanks for your input, you know, let him think about it, and in the meantime, you're fine with keeping the pig, and we'll get back to you and let you know. It'll, it may very well be ten days or so before we get back, but.
Okay, I appreciate.
Matt, I'm sorry, you know me, but I thought I better, I was the, she's going to tag me in if she couldn't finish, and you did a very good job. I'm Rebecca Belt, 600 Oakland Drive. I just want to clarify, so is that, she doesn't have to worry that they're going to knock on the door May 12th?
They're not, they won't be knocking on the door May 12th.
They won't knock on the door May 12th, and then, okay. So can we have any?
And then if we get, if we, if the decision doesn't go your way, we'll give you probably the same amount of time they gave you last time to make those arrangements, so. So it isn't a deal where they're gonna...
Completely appreciate that.
Yes.
Like we were saying, it's like sending your kids off to, you know, a flow an hour away and saying, "Just stay here till mommy comes back to get you." We don't want to do that. And he would have required maybe more vaccines to go somewhere else, which she was willing to do, but you don't want to put your kids through that either, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we going to get like some feedback from Don in that, and maybe, or?
Well, I gave you the information, I'm, I guess, you know, I'm not necessarily giving you advice on how to proceed, but, if you could feel like you've got the votes to, to bring it up, somebody could do that, but.
I'd like some interpretation possibly by, by Mr. Wade, because to, to look at the, at the ordinance, there appears to be some level of discretion or assessment built into this process. Because the, the ordinance makes reference, you know, to farm, farm-type animals being bred for a specific purpose.
In a specific zone.
And...
Residencies, or in a specific zoning, which is not residential.
And in this particular circumstance where, where she has documentation about the animal, about its purpose, that the limitations set on it. I'm just kind of interested to see if, if there is potentially some sort of discretion on this, to the extent that there's still city oversight and review on this, but given the, the, the medical or mental health implications of this, I'd like to be sensitive to that if possible.
Right now, our code of tax in two different ways. They, one, classify them as a farm animal, which means they can't be, they can't be kept within twenty-five feet of any dwelling, even if the owners are a hundred and fifty foot of their neighbors, which can be waived, but it still doesn't get them by the twenty-five foot. And then we also classify them as dangerous specifically, all swine. So it would take a couple of fairly major changes to our existing code. The trouble with the pot-bellied pig was that it can get big. And people thought they were getting these miniature things, and they turned into a large animal. And this is what we've hooked up Juliana pigs, and they have certain characteristics, and I suppose if you tie it to the lineage, it actually has some proof before the animal can be registered or something. There might be a way of getting there.
Yeah, I can definitely see the difficulties of just opening it up carte blanche. But, you know, in, in this particular case, it seems like particular care has been taken that can be documented, so it'd be nice if there was a little bit more discretion based upon medical reasons.
If you're gonna go down that road, I think you need to also consider quantity, breeding, I mean, those types of things you're gonna, are you gonna, we, if you're a breeder in Council Bluffs, you can have six animals, and you want six pigs in next door to your houses.
Well, we've had a similar request recently based on it being a therapy animal, for a dead type of animal, and so then, you know, the problem becomes, well, how, where, where is the, the line, I mean?
Did we ever see a letter from a doctor on the other animal?
Just a claim.
Yeah, never a letter.
Have some special training, that the animal be, have some special training. Specifically, it says it's just a family pet, doesn't cut it.
Right.
And could the pig be, seem to have special training?
The, like, service dogs can go on a plane?
Earlier, there were, where somebody to back up that.
Well, that, and not every, as I understand it, not every animal that can be a service animal necessar, local jurisdiction is not necessarily precluded from limiting certain types of animals, with perhaps the exception of service dogs. But that's just my memory, I, you know, I was...
I would like to ask the owner just real quick if there is any special training that would certify the pig as being
Like they do with dogs.
A service animal.
I don't, I don't know. I was, I believe that dogs and ponies are only recognized in Council Bluffs as service animals. I was, actually quoted that. I don't know that it would be, have any service animal training. I mean, I'm sure they could. They, they're listed as the fourth smartest animal out of all the breeds, I'm sure that... But I, I just don't know.
I just didn't know since, you know, the information is, is that this breed, you know, is tame and was specifically selected. I just didn't know if maybe there was a little more information that we could.
We, we would have to change. I've been doing just a little bit of, I guess, pig research. We were talking, because I was curious, because I'm, this is not a subject on which I'm an expert. Despite my extended family, many of them being farmers, I, I know very little about animals outside of, say, cats and perhaps dogs, to be honest, but I was looking to see, because I was fairly certain, sometimes a name of something can be misleading, like, for example, a Guinea pig is actually a type of rodent, not a pig, and it's not even from Guinea. But as I've discovered, but I was looking to see if, if this sort of, if this animal was even came under pig, as, as scientifically understood and as written in our ordinance, just to make certain that, first of all, that the law even applied here, before we argue about whether we should change it.
There's different, what do I want to say, genus names or family names?
Yeah.
Or like the Sus scrofa is the generic name that covers all swine, all four swine.
Yep, and I can confirm that. I just saw that, and that's how our ordinance is written currently, so it would cover all swine, and I checked. The Juliana is a particular type of, of breed that is of the, of the genus Sus scrofa, scrofa. So it would fall, as, I believe as the ordinance is written, it, it would fall under it, so, so for you to know and my colleagues, I believe, the law would have to change, it, it would have to change to allow. I was looking to see if there was maybe an exception, just like the Guinea pig's not a pig, but, but it isn't, but I, it looks like it would be banned, so I would agree with, the way it's written, I would agree with animal control.
What about, like, I know some people have chickens, what about a farm permit, some type of in-town?
You know, a fair amount about the chicken.
Yeah, is it not? Because you're not using it for like a farm, is that why that would not work, Dick? I was wondering that too, if they could do the farm permit where you get, you know, the neighbors to sign off and get to have a plan, or is it different because it's not?
You can't have roosters, right?
Is that they can't, under a farm permit, a farm regulation, where they can't be within twenty-five foot.
Yeah, that makes sense. I never thought about that. You can't be in that, yeah, that makes sense.
We have, it's kind of being hit from a couple different sides here, both as a dangerous animal and as a farm animal.
You'd have to keep it outside if, yeah, if you were going to keep it as a...
Would, and as I understand with chickens, roosters are not allowed, is that?
Correct. I wonder if...
Because I noticed in this, again, just what I can find on Google, that the Juliana pig, apparently the male versions, the male gender rather of, of, of this, this type of animal are, tend to be more solitary and more territorial than the female. So perhaps it's similar concerns compared to chickens. I don't know.
Do you think that they would know at Boyz Town if you could get some sort of service animal? You know, because you got this letter from the doctor. Could you maybe check on that?
The psychiatrist said due to legal reasons for Boyz Town, they refer you back to the pediatrician. So although we see her sometimes twice a month, as the pediatrician referred us, they have to refer us back to the pediatrician, that's the letter.
Part of the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what I was trying to think is if there was someone that you knew of that could see if there is a way, like, they had mentioned earlier, to get actually certified as a companion, you know, as a, like a dog can, who, what else did we say, could? You said ponies and dogs right now, but?
Servicing.
Yeah, a service animal, if it could actually be an official, you know?
He can be registered as an emotional support animal, an emotional service animal, he, it would be, I mean, they, that costs thousands of dollars.
That's true.
So, I mean, I guess he could probably be sent away, and I, I don't know, the same kind of training, I'm sure.
It would have to go through the training, like the fire department dog.
Right, yeah, that was really expensive.
Was very expensive, so.
Really expensive, yeah.
And, and part of the difficulty we have is, we're forced, we have the job of coming up with the rules that apply to everybody, and so the, the difficult part is, is honestly coming up with rules that apply in the vast majority of cases, and there will always be exceptions, like, for example, the lady who wanted to have a particular kind of snake. Python, ball python, I think it was. Thank you. And, and I have no doubt in her case, she was exemplary in taking care of this animal, but then we had to look to the general rule of, would it be a good idea to have any type of python within city limits, close to people, as opposed to being, you know, out in the country, where you, you might not be twenty or fifty feet from your neighbor. So, so as we make our decision, that's, just in general, but on an issue like this particularly, we have to weigh the, the general rule, that is, what, if, if we make an exception here, like the mayor was alluding to, we'll have to come up with all the rules of the game, so to speak. Plus, it would open it up to everybody who could, who could meet those rules. We could try to tailor those rules, you know, to make them as reasonable as possible, but it can get really technical to the point where then you really can't have the animal, so then it becomes a bit of a game, and we don't want to do that.
I don't know, I don't want, I didn't intend for you to get this.
No, no, the law, laws are, are commend you, because it's tough to speak in public, especially about something you're really personal and, you know, passionate about. The tough part is, just so you kind of understand where, where we kind of have to come from, we have to look at things that way. So it's, however we come out on it, it's, it's not personal, and we, we just have to weigh a lot of things, and there, there's no hundred percent perfect answer in anything we do. You know, that's the tough part. We have to weigh a lot of different factors. But, you know, I would be curious to see if, if there is something in the law, law about that, and, and I don't, may, maybe, I'm not just dead set against changing anything ever, just because, but I tend towards not cha, my, speaking for myself, I tend towards not changing the list unless, unless circumstances have changed, like society as a whole, we've decided something wasn't what we thought it was before, or, or things sometimes just change over time, you know? Because I don't, I don't want to get in a situation where every year the list is in flux, so this year I can have the animal, next year I can't, so I, that's settled. These are allowed, these aren't. I'd like that to slowly change over time. But maybe this is an example, I think we just need more information, but, you know, without it, I'd have to say, my, just speaking for myself, my gut reaction is not to change it unless given a really strong reason to do so. So I'd need more information to change my mind, to be honest.
Something that I can help with, or is that something that you guys?
Well, that's something I'm sure we could...
I would do, if you could give maybe your phone number to the city clerk in case they do need to get ahold of you and get a question answered or something.
And any more information that you find that you want us to see, just email us or get it to Marcy, and she can get it to us.
Because I'm not frankly very familiar at all with any type of, of pig as, as a pet, or e, even as an emotional support animal, so I'll admit my ignorance on the topic. Help educate me to try to get my vote on it.
Absolutely. I just don't want the lack of, the lack of knowledge, so if there's something that I can do to help.
Absolutely.
You know, people, when they think about the pig, they're thinking of a twelve-hundred-pound farm hog that's dirty with loose stools and flies and mud all over the place, and that's really like a, he's like the size, comparable to the size of a beagle, but they're just dense, you know?
Thought about asking if we could bring him, but we didn't.
Only service animals, see, there's the catch twenty-two.
They're very popular in Puerto Rico.
I'm not asking to take him grocery shopping or anything.
They don't have a lot of rules there.
No, there's no rules.
No, they really don't have a lot of rules there.
I can get meat on a stick of it.
Thank you. We'll be, we'll be in touch.
I was just going to say, I think, Nate, for, for your information, I think part of why she brought the ordinance from Bellevue and Omaha.
Why, that's helpful. Why, that's helpful.
They're definitely a precedent, and they're much bigger...
Oh, that's true, a part, just so you understand, though, we tend to err on the side of, of, of not permitting more things than they do, for whatever reason, different places, just so you know, for example...
Would it be helpful if we tried to investigate what led them, how long they've had pigs added?
Yeah, like, like if they banned it, and why they changed it, and...
Why they added them, and where they got their information.
Maybe, maybe their humane society might be a good place to, to ask the history. Is it in the, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll be sure to read this, but...
Mark Langen is the vice president of Nebraska, the field operations for Nebraska Humane Society.
It might be.
Said that he would like to come advocate, but...
It'd be interesting to know, too, what the, what the record has been since they changed those ordinances, if they've experienced problems or they've had complaints.
There's also a couple testimonials in your packet on that issue as well.
Right, and he, the, all the people that...
Yeah, we'll take a look at.
I offered the information from, they said, "Please, if anybody had any questions, please call them." So, I mean, they're direct quotes, all the words were changed. Feel free.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
No, thank you, ma'am. Sure, of course.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Just, someone dropped a article by today that, and told me that in the May issue of American Legion Magazine, Rainbow Post Number Two in Council Plus Iowa got recognized, it was chartered in nineteen-twenty, named after the Forty-Second Infantry Division, which was dubbed the Rainbow Division during World War II, because the members of that unit came from twenty-six states in the District of Columbia, so Council Plus was the second American Legion post certified in Iowa, if that's the right term, and congratulations for being in the May issue of American Legion Magazine.
Yeah, that's cool.
All right, we are adjourned.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call, and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.